Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Coles. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
I declare a quorum. Next item, approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve minutes, date of March 28, 2013. Is there a second?
The move.
Anything on the question? Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation. It's amendment to chapter five, article one, section five dot one oh one of the municipal code. Mr. Forrest, will you take us through the summary? And then I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Live music has been included in the UDO as a special use for very specific reasons. And that mainly because the potential for nuisance noise levels is inherent with the presentation of live music. Staff had been receiving some complaints about an establishment in town that was holding karaoke on a very regular basis. And with the rise of the popularity of karaoke, what we found is that when we were trying to enforce some noise restrictions against this, we were having some issues with the definition of live music and live entertainment, which again, in the UDO and also in the municipal code, in the liquor control section, requires that any establishment having live music or live entertainment has to get a special use permit first. What we are recommending is that the, this type of live entertainment be specifically added to the definition of live music contained in section five point one oh one of the municipal code, thus requiring a special use be granted in those zoning districts that require it. Although the argument has been raised that this form of entertainment uses pre-recorded music, mechanical reproduction, as it's contained in the definitions, should not be considered live entertainment. Once you add a microphone and a PA system, which typically creates more sound pressure than regular stereo speakers, and the voice of a human being singing, it is in fact, by definition, live music and live entertainment. Further, the requirements of section five point four oh five H of the liquor control section of the municipal code specifies there should be no live music or other entertainment without the premises first having secured a special use permit. Each establishment requesting live entertainment needs to be assessed for the potential of ambient noise creating a nuisance for adjoining occupancies, whether they be next to that establishment, upstairs from, or on adjacent properties. Typically, as an evening wears on and more beverages have been consumed, typically the volume goes up and the quality of the performance goes down, so. Staff recommends approval of the recommended revision amendment to the definition, which has been prepared in consultation with the city attorney. And this will then allow the city to, the ability to regulate what occupancies are allowed this form of live entertainment. If you decide to go forward with this, what staff will do is notify all the holders of liquor licenses in town that this has been enacted. We would request that there not be establishments grandfathered, and that once this ordinance is passed, any establishment that wants to have live music, live entertainment, including karaoke, would be liable to get the special use.
Thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the recommendation. Look for a second, and then I'll call in any questions.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I, I have one question. The special use, and, let me get this right. If you come in for a special use, it goes down to the building department for a special use, or is it going to the city clerk's office, knowing that that's where the liquor license occurred?
They would apply, really, at the community development, and they would have to go through the special use procedure, just like anybody else requesting a special use.
So my question is, may I do a follow-up? My question is, then, they would have to go through the whole thing with the planning and zoning board and, and all this? So if someone's having a fundraiser, I'm just throwing that out there, having a fundraiser booked at some establishment, or a wedding at some establishment, maybe we get one, you know, a banquet hall or something like that, or VFW, or someone has a wedding there, you, we gonna have, those people gonna have to go all the way back to planning and zoning for a special use, and, and come all the way to the council for final blessing? So you're looking at almost a month.
Mr. Forrest?
No, that would be only for establishments that have a liquor license and are going to offer this on a regular basis. I believe we have other permits, temporary permits, one day permits, that they can apply for the city clerk's office. If somebody's gonna have a party with live music, we have, that, that would be a separate type of permit somebody can get.
So.
I wanna call in a few other people, and then I can come back to you. Mr. Mayor?
John, just so we understand, if they have a jukebox in, in the place, they can play that all they want, even though it's gonna be, could be louder than the karaoke, correct?
Correct.
Alderman Lazara.
John, how would this affect? Because I think really the only place in, in Wooddale right now to have a wedding would be Salt Creek. How would that affect them if they were having a wedding that they had maybe an open mic or, or a band or something like that? Would they still need to apply for this?
I don't believe so. I believe that we have, again, if somebody wants to have a one-time event, they can come in and, through the city clerk's office, and get us a special permit to allow them to do that. But if there was going to be an establishment that has a liquor license issued, and they wanted to offer live entertainment on a regular basis, then they would have to come in. Crossroads was, was required to do it when they first opened, because they wanted to have live entertainment.
And if the Park District or Salt Creek Falls underneath that situation, I guess in theory, they could come in, apply for the special use, and since they're a community agency, maybe we could waive the cost of it and, and approve it, so, so then it's in place going forward, correct? If we end up in a, in that situation?
I would expect you have the authority to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any follow-up? Alderman Lazara? Okay, good, sure. Alderman Woods.
What's the cost for the special use permit?
Well, I believe this, they would have to go through the regular special use procedure, which would be the $555. Unless you wanted to make some other type of arrangement.
And then a one-day special, one-use pass? What does that, or that's not usable in the?
Off the top of my head, I don't know how much those are, but I believe those are applied for through the city clerk's office, and it's a modest fee.
But those aren't applicable to the businesses that we're talking about, correct?
No.
Okay.
Correct.
Alderman Sizmarski?
John, what's this gonna do with people that have parties in their backyard? I mean, I know this is for liquor establishments, but once they find out that anybody in their backyard can have a mariachi band or a live band in their backyard and not pay?
Well, again, the code already has a section in it that says if you're gonna have a party and have a live band, you can come to the clerk's office, you get a one-day permit.
So even in the backyard, you'd have to have, you could actually be fined for not having a permit?
Correct.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Doing follow-up with the discussion that we had about could be waiving the fees for taxing bodies, I will tell you, $500 to go through the whole process for this, I'll say it today, and I'm going to vote no for this ordinance, okay? Because $500 for a nonprofit organization that has a one thing, or occasionally, or we do this for a nonprofit organization like the VFW, American Legion, you have to think of every taxing bodies up here. Just because they are a municipal taxing bodies, Park District, Grand, that ain't, you know, the other thing that ain't in this policy is the one-day thing. I mean, for $500 to just have karaoke and go through the procedures, there's gotta be an easier way to do this than going, spend that kind of money for a, a business that's trying to stay afloat, which we'll be discussing that, staying afloat. And, and I see your, your concern, but that's where the liquor license comes in play here. There should be something in that liquor license that we have talked about in several times. If they have, if our police officers go back to that establishment several times with loud music, shut 'em down. Shut them down. Okay? If we are having problems with a few establishments that this ordinance is coming out, then shut them down. Because they've been down there three times, a violation of music, shut them down for tonight. That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
John, I know why this came about. We had a, some issues, and there was discrepancy on the live music and whatnot. But I know Crossroads has bands over there. Top Golf has bands during summertime. Salt Creek has bands. Do these guys all have special uses?
Mr. Forrest?
If they don't, they should have. If they do it on a regular basis, again, it's, for any establishment like the VFW or the American Legion or the backyard party, we already, it's already in the code where somebody is allowed to come in and get a short temporary permit to allow that. Somebody who's gonna do it every once in a while would not be required to come in and get the special use. They could come in and get that special event permit or, or whatever it's entitled, you know, to allow that. But any establishment, you know, again, Crossroads was required to come in and get the special use before they started offering live music several years ago. Whether the golf course or Top Golf or any other establishment in town offers music on a regular basis, if they do, then yes, they would be required to come in and get the special use. If they don't, then...
Top Golf, I think Friday or Saturday night, they have a band. I mean, everybody's having a good time. I mean, there's not really any residents around there. And I know, I've been to the Salt Creek Country Club a couple times, and there's been music over there, so. If, we need the...
Well, I believe we could actually be proactive in, as this is about to pass, perhaps Mr. Forrest can reach out to those entities that we know are doing the right things and get them on board to go through the special use process. And, and for a governmental entity, that perhaps we could waive that fee. And then the VFW, that's more of a nonprofit, and we'll get them through, you know, as quick as we can.
Can I make a follow-up?
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, talking to the chief, you know, let's face it, if somebody's doing karaoke, I mean, okay, if they're near residents or whatever, as long as they keep the doors closed, I mean, I don't think they're doing anything bad. I don't think the council would have a problem giving them a special use to karaoke as long as they're not, if they're getting loud, then the police will go in and say, hey, and turn them off. Right, to go to the, I guess they gotta go to CDC to get the special use?
Yes. They would have to, because contained in the UDO, under permitted uses, establishments that offer live entertainment in the C1, the C2, and the TCB district, it's only allowed as a special use. So they would have to come in and go through the whole procedure. Again, the only thing we're doing is we're adding basically one word to the definition of live music in the municipal code. Again, you, you can argue, is karaoke considered live music or not? I mean, pre-recorded music is exempt. So a DJ, jukebox, that's exempt. But once you hand somebody a microphone and turn on a PA system, by definition, live music is the music produced by a human being as distinguished from mechanical reproduction and played in an establishment.
Is, and I'm not sure what the answer would be, but is this something that we can add to the liquor license? That when they come in for their liquor licenses, they say, you know, we'd like to have karaoke or live music, and be done at that point without going to ZBA or CDC now?
I mean, I can certainly, we can come up with something like that. If we wanted to, to revise the procedure that somebody would have to go through to do that, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that. The only thing that staff is concerned about is allowing the city council to have some control over what establishments offer as far as live entertainment. Because right now, it's an enforcement problem for us, because that's not included in the definition.
But if we tie it to the liquor license, if they're getting loud, they start getting violations, then they have to be worried about losing their license.
You could do that. In the liquor control section of the municipal code, section H, there should be no live music or other entertainment without the premises having first secured a special use permit from the city pursuant to the terms of the zoning ordinance. That's in the liquor control section. You know, so it's mentioned a couple of times. It's mentioned in the municipal code. It's mentioned in the liquor control section of the municipal code, and it's mentioned in the UDO, that special uses are required for live entertainment. So I guess what we're, kinda deciding is, is karaoke considered live entertainment? And by definition, in our municipal code, it is.
Alderman Woods?
I'm a little confused on if they do this all the time or only a little bit. You're making some differentiation between how many times a year they perform or something. I don't understand that.
Well, I guess we would have to come up with a definition of what, I mean, typically, you know, people are allowed a certain amount of garage sales a year, they're allowed to put up temporary signs a certain number of times a year. I mean, if we wanted to maybe make it consistent with that, which I think it's four times a year, they can do something like that.
I mean, I think that to continue, we would have to do something, because then there would be the argument, I only do it three times a year, so. And then he sneaks in the fifth and the sixth one, you didn't see that one, you know what I mean? It's kinda open...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, it's just kinda open-ended, you know, should be consistent and fair across the board. And then if Salt Creek and, and Top Golf are doing it, whether we give it to them or whatever, if there's a process, then everybody needs to follow the same process. It's all, I just want it to be consistent.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
If it's in the liquor, liquor area, why are we talking about it? I mean, we have authority on it now. The liquor commissioner does.
It sounds like the liquor code points to needing a special use. Is that correct? So, so we still have to make a modification?
Correct, yes. The liquor control code states you can have no live music or live entertainment without first having secured the special use.
I guess this question's to the mayor. What you, what we're gonna, we look at that liquor commission stuff and redo it and...
This is one of the items that, live entertainment, karaoke, no good, DJ, fine. I mean, what's the difference?
But wasn't there some changes in liquor com...
Well, that's...
Is that...
But we have a couple little issues here.
Except what I do wanna stress is that right now, we're only changing the definition, and we don't have a lot of complaints right now on our process to have a backyard party or for Salt Creek to have music. There, there's not a problem that I know of right now. We're, we're just trying to fix a few businesses that are abusing their tenancy. Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, this was a recommendation from Attorney Bond two on tightening up our, our language in the code. It's just a simple housekeeping issue, but we can see there's some questions stemming from that, so we need to make sure that we address all these questions. But the intent was to tighten up our language so everything is more, more clear, not more confusing.
Thank you. Ms., Alderman Woods?
I was just gonna say, apparently there are some issues, otherwise we wouldn't be talking about this. And again, as long as they're fair and equitable, I'm okay. You know, maybe we don't do the knee-jerk reaction and, you know, let's look at it a little more, and maybe it does need some massaging with the liquor license or a different application, different avenue to achieve the special use or, or something. I don't know. It's just, there's a lot of moving parts here and, and different entities or, or people looking at this, you know? Maybe we need to address, look at it a little deeper.
Mr. Murmas?
I think we've got a good gauge on where the council's at, some of the questions they have, so perhaps we'll go back, we'll get some of these answers, we'll talk to Attorney Bond, and then we'll just, you know, there's no rush on this, and we can bring it back to another committee meeting and have some of these questions ready and answered.
Send the motion to table.
Okay, I'm gonna call in Alderman Shaki, then I'll rescind the motion. Alderman Shaki?
We have other ordinances that take into a, a, a part of it is that you have to be so far from something or other. I mean, couldn't we make this a distance thing between the place of where the music is and a residential area?
Mr. Forrest?
I think that that's typically one of the criteria that you look at as the city council when somebody has, in the past, applied for a special use permit to have live music. You consider if there's residential right next to them or right above them, how far they are from the lot lines, are they gonna have the doors closed all the time, are they gonna have somebody outside on the deck, is it gonna be confined inside the building? I mean, those are all the things that, that the council does consider, you know? So yeah, the distance is, is certainly one of the factors, but, you know, would you allow somebody to have a band inside a nightclub or inside a bar, but not allow it outside in the open air on their deck or on their patio? I mean, so those are the kind of answers that you have to come up with when you look at each case individually.
I'm gonna rescind my motion. Does the second agree?
I agree.
I'm gonna make a motion to table to a future committee meeting, once the questions are, are answered and brought back to, to committee. So there's a motion.
Second.
I make the motion, and then there's a second to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, and it is items to be considered at future meetings. A, Uler Downtown Study, April 25. Item B, Lakota Science Study, April 25. Item C, Approval for Staff for Minor Zoning Variations, May 9. And item D, Potter Street Zoning, in May. Any other items to be added? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We called the order, the Public Health, Safety and Judiciary Committee, the minute taker, see that all the same people are here, attended. Broken. Approval of minutes, the meeting, January 31, 2013. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Report and recommendation for purchase of an automatic license plate reader. Chief, you gonna take over?
Sure. Thank you. What we have before you tonight is a proposal to purchase a automated license plate reader. This is a relatively new technology that's being used by law enforcement, but you're seeing the growth of it, it kinda expand exponentially across the country. It's an area that we would like to use to enforce our current traffic and crime, crime prevention strategies. I guess the one thing to remember going into this is officers are doing some of this already. Any license plate that we see on the street, and we have the mobile data computers in the car, we're frequently running license plates, looking, you know, using that publicly viewable data and license plates to, to check on the status of, of different things, be it in, in shopping centers or in traffic when we're running a, or behind a vehicle and getting ready to stop them, we're running their license plate on our computer to find out if there's, you know, the, the situation behind the, the owner or the plates or that. But what this is, is a, it's an automated system that would involve the use of three, it's a three-camera setup on one car. And what this does is, on a daily basis, we would receive three different files from the, from the state and the NCIC, which is the national database, and then any local databases, and they would be uploaded to this computer system that we already have in our cars. What this system does is, as we're going down the road, it's checking current license plates that are out in the, in the public and viewable to us against this database for, there's a lot of things, and I did list some in the memo, but just to go through them real quick, Amber Alerts, obviously, flash messages in Isburn for, for crimes in progress, that's one of the things where we frequently get, you know, hit and run just occurred in Itasca or within a few towns of us. And the officers, you know, they might have a partial plate or they might have the full plate, and an officer's jotting it down, trying to remember. With this type of system, if we have a license plate of, you know, JG 247 was a partial license plate, we can type that into the computer, and if a car passes us with those same sequence, it's gonna alert the officer within about a second. So within about a second of viewing any of these data files that we'd have on the computer, it's gonna alert the officer that, it's gonna show the license plate and the picture of the vehicle that it saw, and to try and match that up with whatever current alert there is. So those are some of the things we have. Known parolees and burglars, that is data that's shared with us through the Illinois Department of Corrections, and we, we do, we are made aware when there's parolees that are living in town, and we make that available to our people. And we also have known criminals that are living in town and/or passing through town that are car burglars, house burglars, a number of different intelligence things that we could input their license plate information. Not to take any enforcement action based just on that, but to alert an officer, hey, this car that you just drove past, there's a known burglar. It doesn't mean we're taking enforcement action based just on that, but it alerts the officer to all that data we're getting on a daily basis. We're getting critical reaches and information about crimes that are occurring all around the area. To physically absorb all that and remember it all, it, it's impossible for the officer to do that, but this, if we input it into our system, we would be able to create alerts. We have people that, especially like a Target or a Juul, there's people that are regularly targeting Targets and Jewels for retail theft, heroin addicts, and we're aware of some of those people and what kinda cars they drive. So we would be alerted if this car sees that vehicle in the shopping center. Wanted suspects, could be local wanted suspects, sometimes we have wanted people that we wanna talk to that aren't, don't have a warrant for them yet. We know they've committed a crime, or a local town knows they've committed a crime. We can put their license plate into this, and the officer is alerted to the presence of that license plate. Suspended and revoked drivers, there's thousands and thousands of them around. Stolen vehicles and license plates, intelligence gathering, you know, once we go to a crime scene, if something just occurred, you know, we might have 50 cars pass us on the way there, and once we get there, all of a sudden, we're finding out, hey, it was a red car, maybe they had a partial plate, maybe they didn't. We can review that data immediately afterwards to see if we can, if we can see what that vehicle was. Couple other things I mentioned in there, and we certainly wouldn't take this stance unless it was something that the council wanted us to do, but I know the finance department has a list of people that aren't purchasing city stickers. We could input that into there, but we don't have to. It's just, it, some towns choose to use it for that. I'm not saying we will. We would seek direction on that, but we've kinda shied away from, you know, going onto people's property and looking for anything, any type like that, but I, I need to make you aware of it, because some towns do do it. And then sex offender compliance. We have sex offenders that live in town. We have sex offenders that live all around, around us in the area. We could input them into this database also, and know, as we're going past a school or a park, hey, there's a sex offender's vehicle. So basically, I have two very short videos, about three minutes total, just to kinda demonstrate, because it's easier than me explaining it, what the process would be like that we'd see on the street, and then if I could open up to any questions after that. So let me pull up this video real quick. This here is what the, similar to what we would be seeing in the car as they're driving through traffic. It, it runs the plate and then, as there's an alert, which you'll see in a minute here, the officer would get some type of alarm that, that there's a, there's a car they want to be looking for at that time, along with the picture of the vehicle. So, that's basically the process there. Like I said, it's something that our officers are doing. It just greatly increases the number of plates that we are able to, to run through this one vehicle. So, I'd open up to any questions about this. I'm sure there's plenty.
Right now, if an officer checks the license plate number, that's recorded. And if they have inquiries on a certain license plate, a number of them, it'll give you an indication that something's going wrong. Why are they being checked so often? Now, is this going to have some kind of records on it?
What, what we would come with, with on this is some type of record retention policy. Certainly, you know, an hour is not long enough, but we wouldn't want to keep this data indefinitely. You know, usually within a week to two weeks of a crime occurring, we're usually made aware of it. Where we can go back and review, hey, was there, you know, a vehicle in this area that matched the description? This would not indicate through the state. Like if, if we ran a vehicle, a plate on our in-car vehicle through the normal means, it would show up. It's been run this many times in the last 10 days by these agencies. This just compares it against basically a text file that sits on the in-car computer. So, it doesn't, it just gives an indication of what the status of that license plate was the night before when we received that data file. We would then have to manually run the vehicle, run the plate to make sure that's still the case because someone who's suspended or has suspended registration or stolen plates, that status could change from one day to the next. So, we have to still verify that through other means.
And these will go on, pardon me, go on each patrol car?
No, this would be for one patrol car.
Why just one?
Because it's cost prohibitive to put it on all the patrol cars. And then what we would do is utilize it on, you know, pretty much 24 hours a day for different traffic enforcement activities.
So, you'd run this car down Irving most often?
No, not necessarily. We would be going through areas such as, I mentioned, the shopping centers where, you know, fairly regularly, you get people that, you know, have committed these crimes in other areas or people were aware of. Or as we're doing school radar zones, it's not going to stay just on Irving. Certainly, you know, it is a traffic enforcement vehicle, but it'll be used throughout the, throughout the town.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley? Well, I'm sorry, where are you? You had your hand.
Couple of questions. This, for one car, the price tag is $16,000?
That's correct.
Now, let me answer this question. So, the computer system that we have in play now, in our control cars, where would that, will they be able, or are we going to update this computer system in the cars now too?
No, it, it will work on our current system. Probably next year or the year after, we're going to be coming to you for the computers in general, but not because of this system. Just because of the fact that they're already three years old, I think.
Okay. Right now, how many cameras we have mounted in our cars now? Don't we have two?
We have cameras in every single vehicle that record every single traffic stop. So, we have that. This is, this is an infrared camera and another camera that just compare the, the license plate against the current data file.
And I totally understand that, but where are you going to mount this camera in these squad cars, or in this one squad car?
They're external mounts on the, on the top of the roof.
Go ahead, ask a couple more.
You still have that picture from the police car that was up there. He showed you where they mounted it, on the trunk or tail?
Yeah, it, it does depend on, on each vehicle, but, you know, some have it on the, yeah, some have it on the roof that you'll have one in front of the light bar, one behind the light bar. It just depends on each car setup and what each system is specific to, to your, your cars.
Alderman Rowesley?
Greg, the, the camera, where was this taken at? The climate? They're showing the demonstration.
I believe this one was Minnesota.
I mean, how, I don't know how these work with snow and stuff and weather and stuff. I mean, do we have, do you have any information on that?
No, but I know another number of agencies are starting to roll these out. I, I would say it would be similar to our light bars that are, you know, they have a lot of electronics in them and we've had those for several years without any issues.
But it's encased. I'm, I'm looking at a light bar that's encased versus a camera, it's not as.
This camera is encased in a housing and inside is the camera. You know, I, I'm sure it has, you know, sealed connections and all that too.
What kind of warranty is on this?
I'd have to check the quote. I, I don't remember what the warranty is. I don't have it off the top of my head.
And is the data that is out there, I mean, with the state, is it updated like that?
The data file we would get, which is basically a text file, it's updated nightly. And then it would be wirelessly sent to the cars. And then, so let's say we get a hit on a suspended registration for no insurance. And that comes through the night before and it's on that database. And the next day, we run into this car and it alerts us that there's suspended registration. Then what we would do is verify that by putting it into the lead system to verify that it is still. And then that'll be definitely up to date. So, it could be up to, I guess, up to 24 hours old, but we would have to verify that data before we took any action.
One more question. Have you know any towns around here that have these? Or have you know any police departments that's had them for a little bit while? And has there been any accidents of where the police officer is paying attention to a screen and not the road?
You know, that's a danger with everything we have in our cars right now.
That's right.
It absolutely is. You know, we instruct our people, you know, you've got to be sure when you're taking action because they have to control a lot of stuff in the car, from the camera to the lights to the siren. Elmhurst, I know, is rolling these out. Hoffman Estates is looking to roll these out. I was actually at a tour at NYPD where they have successfully done some of these. And obviously, they have a little bit different crime problem than we do. But they've been able to, you know, put out instant alerts on vehicles that have been involved in something and successfully found cars.
Has there been accidents because of police officers paying attention to that instead of the road?
Not that I'm aware of, but it wouldn't surprise me.
Okay.
Alderman Woods?
Chief, is this, it sounds like this is a separate database? So, there's got to be separate storage and computer space and networking? Is this cost really, the whole cost, cameras, software, everything? And is there a subscription that's renewable that we got to pay monthly or yearly?
I, I would, the current system, it's not going to go on a separate server or anything else. It's going to sit on the local system. And like I said, we're not going to have a, a, a long retention period. And then I will have to get, I, I can get you the, I can't remember the service fees off the top of my head after, after a year. I can find those before the end of the meeting though.
But there are fees. How much storage space does this take up? I know that we've recently redone servers and stuff like that. I'd hate to see that we're now taking on something that's going to overpower those because you're storing data files plus it looks like some small JPG or pictures along with it.
Yeah, it's my understanding that it wouldn't cause a problem with our current system in the, in the cars. And we're not looking to upload it to the city servers either.
Where would it reside?
On the local computer.
For two weeks of data?
Yeah.
Or whatever timeframe you chose?
Yeah, and we would definitely establish a policy on that. The accreditation, because it's so emerging, the accreditation commission is coming out with standards on this too. So, we would certainly make sure we're in compliance with that.
And then one last question, if I could. Sounds like this thing will do a lot of supposedly wonderful things. What is your purpose? What, what is the big intent in, in you getting it? I mean, you've already alluded to the fact that some of the things that you wouldn't load or want to do or weren't thinking of doing. But what are the, let's say, three main things that you're looking at?
I, I would say one of the biggest things is traffic enforcement. We have, you know, our constant complaint is traffic issues. And we run into a number of suspended revokes, no valid drivers, suspended registrations. That's a constant. You know, we do hundreds of arrests a year for, for that type of thing. So, that'd be one. Number two is keeping track of all the intelligence we have. We have, you know, we're made aware of license plates of people that are heroin offenders, car burglars, you know, like I said, retail theft suspects. To be able to input some of our own stuff and like, I could plug in a license plate and type in their person acting suspicious last week at the Park District. It's just, there's so much information that's coming out on a daily basis, both through critical reaches and our meetings with other agencies around here. For an officer to remember all that, we, we, you know, do our best to, to know the high-profile ones or whatever. But it just gives us another tool to say, hey, I might not remember everything about that plate, but if we put it in our system, we'll be able to immediately know that this is what it was tied to and it'll merit some further look. Not action based just on that, but merit some further looking into.
Can I get one, one quick follow-up? But he triggered another question. I can't help myself. Given what you, what you just said and, and what the officer said, the state trooper, on how many hits they get, is this really going to wind up taking an officer out? I mean, I know he's performing his function, but really now it's like, they're going to get so many hits. We could, that officer's going to be off the street most of the time, either writing a ticket or taking someone to jail because he's driving a suspended license, you know, quicker and faster. And now we're going to wind up where we need another police officer to keep coverage.
No, it, it definitely would be a as time permits type thing. You know, we're on the road on a regular basis and there's times when an officer's right behind someone that has expired registration. Some, we don't, sometimes we don't have to have time to deal with everything, speeding. There's a level of tolerance that once someone's one mile over the limit, we don't have time to stop every car like that. So, this would be a similar thing. There's actually a number of officers that are, are ones that are the more go-getters that are looking forward to hopefully an opportunity to use this, to go out and be even more proactive. You know, so, I guess common sense and discretion always have to apply. And there's sometimes discretion has to apply that you got to let some things go. And if we're busy on the street, we don't focus on traffic. We focus on what's happening in town, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Wiener?
Thank you. As long as the maintenance costs are not cost prohibitive, I'm certainly in favor of this. The $16,000, if it takes off four or five bad guys in the first year, isn't it well worth it? This is well worth making our community safer, better, safer on the streets? Because these drivers, I believe it, if they don't have their license, it's revoked, they're probably going to be more dangerous drivers and we really don't want them going through Wooddale. So, I definitely support it, just as long as the maintenance fees are, you know, not cost prohibitive. Thank you.
I'll get you those numbers too.
Alderman Zar?
This technology is, is incredible. My question is, how, how far does this pick up license plates? Do you have to be the car right in front of you? Can it be a mile away? Is it something that, you know, will scan it as, as cars are driving by? Is?
The combined speed, like a, if, if you were going down Wooddale Road at, say, 35 and a car's coming north at 40, that's half of the speed that it can handle. It can handle up to 150 miles an hour combined speed of oncoming traffic. And then, you know, on the side, a 20 to 40 foot range would be a, a safe range to be able to, to catch those plates.
So, 20 to 40 feet, okay.
As you're in, there, there'll be one that's pointed at oncoming traffic and then others off to the side where we designate to do them. Some towns use these for, like a, let's say, a three-hour parking enforcement, which we don't really have those areas in town. But some towns have it that they can drive by a car. And after, if three hours have passed and they go past that same car in the same location, it'll let them know. They don't have to check every single car.
Has, has this ever been used with, without being on a squad car? In other words, let's just say, for instance, we have Irving Park Road cameras. Mounted on that and being able to scan license plates and Jewel?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's, you're seeing more and more of it, just like, you know, pretty much anywhere you go now, there, there's a surveillance camera, shopping centers, apartment complexes, homeowners associations. Some of those are, they're adding these and they're on the highways, you know, all over the place now.
So, these can be stationary then, if?
Yes, they could.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you'll even see tow trucks that have them now. And they're using them to check, you know, at their large complexes against vehicles that they know are allowed to be in certain spots or something, so.
I'm sorry, hold through that. And this is, this is okay with probable cause? Is that right?
All this does is check a visible license plate against a database. We still have to have probable cause, like if, if something comes up that a driver is suspended, I can't pull that car over just because there, there's someone listed as suspended. I have to look further into it, verify that on the computer. And then you can check it against a photo or the physical description. License plate, a vehicle coming up as, with stolen license plates, that comes up immediately. And we run into that on a fairly regular basis, one of two plates stolen. But we'll look at the vehicle right away and it says it's registered to a red Chevy Cavalier. And, you know, at that point, we're pretty sure that, right, they're missing their front plate. It's, it's not a stolen vehicle. So, you, you still have to establish probable cause and that's where it comes down to training. We would have training on this and, you know, reviewed by the supervisors and a retention policy for any of the data that's on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would think it's a good thing with being a town with a lot of transient traffic. We're, you know, we do have a tendency to get people come into our town that don't, undesirable, so. Do I need to make a motion to, is it for the purchase of this? You either, no, not to exceed the amount, $16,705?
It's in this budget, correct?
It's correct.
Did you get a second yet? A second?
I, I have one question. Mr. Woods brought up a valid point is, before I, I take it next meeting, council meeting, we'll have all the data that we want. Like Mr. Woods asked, what is the contract? I mean, before I vote 100%, I'll vote tonight for it. But I'd like to know what the cost is going to be down the line. I mean, is this going to cost us $30,000, $40,000 through, through one camera? So, I would go with, but I hope I got that data before the council meeting.
I would agree with that and I, I will have that for you, tonight or tomorrow, so.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
That's one question, chief. They had, they said it was $25,000, but is that because we already have the computer system on?
Well, we talked to some vendors that had a product that was up to $60,000. You know, so we're trying to find one that we've seen demoed. We actually rode around with a demo car in town and experienced what this one's able to do. And we think it's going to be adequate for us. But, yeah, they, they range in price. This is the lowest end of the price that we can get right now.
Alderman Wesley?
And a follow-up. Is it, does this fall under our policy that we have to go out for bid for this because it's over $10,000? Or is this going to be earmarked for one or is? or is, I just, because it's over $10,000?
Well, this is, we're going through, there's only about six real providers out there, and we looked at the price of all of them, and then we demoed this one. There, there's one distributor for this system is CDS Office Technologies that supplied our in-car computers and cameras. So it's my understanding, and we can verify with Attorney Bond, that as long as the whole council approves of it, we're fine to do that, but we did go out and seek other products, and we're confident this is the lowest price.
I just want to make sure legally we can do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We need a roll call because of that price too. That's a few questions.
Yeah, one more. I'd like to have our municipal lawyer give us some information on this. When you say requires probable cause, that's a wide open area, and there's going to be a lot of people that are going to go to court with it, and, you know, it's going to cost us money for court. Have you thought about that end of it?
I guess I would say with that is, last year, I think we wrote about 6,000 to 7,000 tickets. Every single one of those requires probable cause, so that's training our officers to know, you know, that they have a reason to take enforcement action, and they have regularly scheduled court dates. So they're going to be there anyways, so all of these do have to stand up to a court of law. We're not the ones that make the final decision on that, so. This would fall under the same thing as any, any of our traffic enforcement that we do now.
Greg, something that Alderman Woods brought up. Is this really making the police officer have more time to make more arrests, or is this something like what Alderman Woods was saying, once you make an arrest, and arrest is three hours, regardless of how quickly it takes to identify a license plate? Because really, that's the, the big advantage, is that it quickly can identify a license plate. But then, once it does identify that license plate, the police officer still is going to have the same amount of time that he needs to stop the car, do whatever procedure that he needs to. How is this really improving the, the time that an officer has during the day? I mean, eight hours is eight hours regardless of being, identify a license plate quicker or not. Just a follow-through on this, but if he does make an arrest and it takes him three hours to book him, that car will sit in the parking lot, or does somebody else take that car out because it's becoming a very, you know, more valuable tool for us? I mean, how does that work? Does that...
I guess as far as the eight hours, he's going to be here for the eight hours. As far as the type of crime we're going, or, you know, the type of enforcement we're going to be doing, you're going to see with this probably more serious violations such as suspended and revoked drivers. And like I mentioned, when this, when these all first started, it used to be, oh, let's just spot stolen vehicles. Our, for, for the known people that, we already share databa, not databases even, but share emails and information on, not only in our town, but just the town surrounding us, the ability to be alerted that, hey, we have a known heroin addict that, you know, that we know has been committing car burglaries, and he just drove past us the other way, or, you know, we see him parked somewhere, we still, so I think what this, what'll happen is the seriousness of offense that we encounter will go up. Really, the longest thing to process is a DUI. This is going to have no effect on our DUI enforcement, because that, that's about three hours to process a DUI. A suspended or revoked driver, under an hour. You know, some of the officers that can really do the paperwork quickly, 30 to 45 minutes. It just depends on the, on the capabilities. So I think what it's going to do is you're going to see an increase in the seriousness of offense that we deal with this, with this. You know, we'll still be, you're not doing any type of speed enforcement with this, but the officers will still be doing speed enforcement. They just might be alerted to something more serious while they're out there doing that, so.
So the tool really doesn't give the, the police officer more time to do more arrests?
He may actually spend more time doing arrests than he might otherwise, yes.
Which means that that vehicle could be sitting in, in a parking lot half of the, half of the day. Do you see what I'm getting at?
No, I, I know what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's...
I mean, I like the idea, but I just want to make sure that the $16,000 isn't sitting in a parking lot half of the day, because we're so busy, you know, writing people up because of this.
Right, right.
So I'm just trying to, just trying to justify the $16,000, and, and is it really a tool that, that does help the officer be more efficient in his job? Yes, it does, but yet it's, like Alderman Woods says, it's going to take up more time because of all these more serious arrests. I, I don't know. I'm kind of mixed on it.
And, and I guess that's a trade-off we have to decide if we want. You know, I, I'm going to support whatever decision is made with that. You know, if you have a three to, three to five patrolmen on the street at any given time and one of them's driving this, certainly one of them may be more tied up, you know, in handling more serious enforcement activities if he encounters them. You know, hopefully the, the return will be some of these people that aren't driving through our town, but number two, catching those people that, you know, identified gang members, identified parolees, and being alerted of their presence and activities in a means that we're not violating any of their rights too.
I think it might go back to my question before. Would, would this make more sense to just have this on top of the Irving Park Bridge instead of on a squad car that, again, spends half a day in a parking lot?
The problem is, the, if you're looking to catalog, who comes through a certain area, that's perfect for that. If we're looking to take action, because, let's say you had this, let's say, on the Irving Park Bridge, and you got an alert that a stolen vehicle, or let's even go with a suspended driver had just passed through, and you see the plate and you see it's a white vehicle, getting that data to a patrolman to get out there and try to take action when they're finding it, they're gone by the time you can really take any enforcement action. So I know exactly what you're saying, and there is that chance that an officer's going to spend more time processing someone and, and doing more arrests, so that's the decision that has to be made. The trade-off is, you know, you're probably going to be dealing with more serious offenses, but you're going to have, probably have some better luck in finding those offenses, so.
There are a couple more. Alderman Woods?
Chief, going back to, where's this database? Is this a third-party database? It's not the national or state database?
No, this is provided through the company, but through the state and the NCIC. So they would transfer a database file.
So they get a download to their system, their system then, I'm sure they pay a fee to the state, they take that data to their system, then they split that out to different agencies and charge a fee for that. My fear is, how fresh, and you touched on it before, you know, it could be 24 hours old, but now I've got, you know, two or three different systems working together, and when the world's all good, they all work fine, but, you know, part of my concern is casting the net too wide, you know, and you catch a lot of things necessarily that aren't worth catching.
Sure. And, you know, I guess I would say, we've been told that it's, it's a, it's a good database, it's good every day, checked against the state, and, you know, quite honestly, this is, this is a pretty progressive step for us to take. We've always tried to stay on the, on the next level of it, but I understand there's some concerns with it, so, you know, it's, I think it's a great tool and some things we can do good with, but there's some concerns with it, you know, that you've expressed tonight, and I understand those, so.
Alderman Shauken?
I have a three-part question. I'll give you all the questions at once, and then you can decide what to answer. Number one, can you adjust this system to only pick up major issues or major problems and skip the ones that are minor? Skip the ones where the license is revoked or whatever. Just pick out certain things, stolen, you know, felony or whatever, number one. Number two is, if you did put this under the bridge, for instance, and I like that idea, couldn't it buzz at the dispatch center so they could immediately send out a car, so it wouldn't be too much time wasted? And number three is, we've got to balance budget because we, I think all of us try to give the staff what they need. Is this a real need in your mind, or is this just something you want? I know that's a hard question, but I'd like to really know. Is, do you really need it, or is it something, hey, this is a neat gadget, I'd like to have it?
That's a good question. I'll, I guess I'll just take them in order. As far as adjusting, it's my understanding that the database will come down from the state on a daily basis, and it'll identify everything. We can, it'll come down to officer discretion and/or department policy on what, we're going to be alerted as a violation comes past us. So as far as internally, like I mentioned, you could, you can upload any type of database you want to. If, if we had people that had, we could upload a database of cars that have more than five parking tickets in town. You can do what you want...